Good morning, the meeting is now called to order. We thank all the council members, representatives of the 15 district members. Ms. Perry, Mr. Kowski, the third district's design and the district's council is now 10-10. And we invite the balance of the members to come forward for the meeting. And then commence. It's now 10-10 in the balance of the council. Respect to the people, I have respectful requests. Thank you very much. We've been joined by the representative for the ninth district, Ms. Perry, and the first district, Mr. Reyes. We are looking to see Mr. Burnson, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Holden, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Weiss. We're in the building, we would appreciate your being here. It's now 10:15. We have a very special guest in the council chambers, and we wish to convene the meeting once you've arrived. Sergeant, you would lend your assistance. Sergeant Curry, Mr. Landry, with respect to the additional members. Mr. Weiss is now here, therefore we need three members, and we can proceed. So, Jack O'Gorman is to be sent away. The meeting is now called to order. We thank all the council members for being here. We appreciate the presence of the senior member of the council, the Honorable Herr Burnson from the 12th district. You should know that council meetings are broadcast live on channel 35. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Landry, Garcetti, Han, Hope, Miss Kowski, Pacheco, Perry, Reyes, Ridley Thomas, Weiss, Sline, and Padilla, 10 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I'm now going to ask that you will all rise for the pledge of allegiance. We wish to ask Teresa Bella, tell her if she would be kind enough to lead us in the pledge.
Right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Bella. And that was Bella, and we don't wish for anyone to repeat after Bella under the circumstances. Members of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, we have a very special presentation today, and I now call on three members of the council who were responsible for a very lovely reception just before the council was convened. The members are Councilman Alex Padilla, Councilwoman Cindy Mestakowski, and Councilman Dennis Zine. Would you please lead us in our special presentation this morning?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues. It's our honor as the city council, along with the mayor, to recognize the urban search and rescue team members who traveled to New York. We had a reception in the rotunda at nine o'clock, many of our colleagues attended along with the mayor, and we gave our acknowledgement. We now want to, in this form, present the certificate signed by the entire city council, the mayor, to recognize the members of the urban search and rescue team of Los Angeles City Fire Department for their tremendous work and efforts in New York City after the September 11 tragedy.
We're going to ask the fire chief, Bumatri, to actually read the names of each of the individuals who are here to present the certificate, and then we'll go into the back room afterwards. But for the members of the council and those who were able to join the reception and talk to some of these officers, we really have reason to be proud and reason to be appreciative of their efforts, not only what they did in New York, but that they are here with us day in and day out to provide the same level of protection and service to the city of Los Angeles. So this is really a very special occasion for us.
Thank you to Councilman Zine and Mestakowski, who originated the idea for doing this, and it was natural for me to say yes. And I think in all of our minds, as we've talked in the last several weeks, it was natural to want to recognize the men and women who are with us today. But it's also been a natural to say the pledge of allegiance at a council meeting. It's been a natural to sing the national anthem at boarding events. It's been a natural to do so many things before September 11. But I think you'd all agree that certain things in life have taken on an added significance since September 11. That national anthem at the ballpark means a little bit more. The pledge of allegiance set in the classroom means a little bit more. And so this presentation today isn't just to men and women from the urban search and rescue unit who have done a good job, but it's a special recognition, a historic recognition of the men and women of the urban search and rescue unit from Los Angeles that did a tremendous job. You know, it's been said that the New York firefighters and the police officers from New York, that when disaster struck, they ran towards the World Trade Center, not away from it. Well, the same is said of our folks from Los Angeles. In fact, they just didn't run, they flew 3,000 miles to be part of the scene and part of the aid. As Councilmember Mestakowski mentioned this morning, that fateful Tuesday, that they were on their way to New York, they were the only plane in national airspace traversing the country, and less than 24 hours after the initial attacks, they were on the scene. They were helping. So I think they rose far above and beyond the call of duty, and it's our honor to recognize them and point them out to the public, because we got enough criticism and concern addressed at this body and at city hall about what may not be perfect with the city. But this is the best reminder I think any of us can imagine, that there's a whole lot that is not only good about the city of Los Angeles, but that is great about the city of Los Angeles, and we stand proud, shoulder to shoulder, within men and women from the urban search and rescue unit of Los Angeles. Chief Martin. Now, as I call up Chief Bumatri for the reading of the names, I just want to share some personal thanks to the chief and the department for allowing myself, I know Councilmember Zine, Councilmember Ridley Thomas, the mayor, and others were there, that they all came home, and it was a very poignant moment that you shared with your families. The hugs and the kisses will be ingrained in my mind forever, and you allowed us to be a part of that welcome home, so I want to thank you.
Thank you very much, and I want to express on behalf of the department my appreciation to the council for taking the time for this recognition, certainly today, but for their ongoing support over the past eight years in the support of the program. I think what's real important is that you see here the individuals that are responsible for the program, and they represent a resource that with the addition of additional equipment will give us the flexibility to actually field additional use our teams in this environment that we're in now of uncertainty, and I think that's something that gives us a tremendous flexibility. And it's certainly my personal privilege to be here today to honor these men and women and canine of courage here in this day of honor, and I'd like to just take a quick opportunity to introduce a friend of the department, a former firefighter who retired, a Medal of Valor recipient, William Rowland. If I could have him stand and be recognized. Mr. Rowland is very active in our new museum at old fire station 27 in Councilman Garcetti's district, which was dedicated this past week, and one of the center focuses Councilmember Ridley, Thomas, the mayor, and others were there, that they all came home. And it was a very poignant moment that you shared with your families. The hugs and the kisses will be ingrained in my mind forever. And you allowed us to be a part of that welcome home. So I want to thank you.
Thank you very much. And I want to express, on behalf of the department, my appreciation to the council for taking the time for this recognition, certainly today, but for their ongoing support over the past eight years and the support of the program. I think what's real important is that you see here the individuals that are responsible for the program. And they represent a resource that, with the addition of additional equipment, will give us the flexibility to actually field additional USAR teams in this environment that we're in now of uncertainty. And I think that's something that gives us a tremendous flexibility. And it's certainly my personal privilege to be here today to honor these men and women and canine of courage here in this day of honor. And I'd like to just take a quick opportunity to introduce a friend of the department, a former firefighter who retired, a Medal of Valor recipient, William Rowland. If I could have him stand and be recognized. Mr. Rowland is very active in our new museum at Old Fire Station 27 in Councilman Garcetti's district, which was dedicated this past week. And one of the center focuses there will be a firefighter memorial. And so that's something that will be giving you more information about as we move forward. With that, I'd like to read off the names. And I'll read the names and pass them on to the council members to pass out. Got to negotiate all the aisles here.
Front stage and center, sir.
Gary Bowie.
And we'd ask that you remain standing after you receive your proclamation, please.
Chris Cooper. Scott Mitchell. Don Reyes. Charles Ruddle. She might be Ken Mario. He might be at the bottom here. Teresa Teller. I don't know if we made a separate one for Bella or not.
There go Bella's.
A bone for Bella.
Bella has a bone and a certificate.
She does have a certificate. Craig White. Brother Wade White.
Hey, he's the councilman. He's the councilman.
Jack has a dual assignment.
Greg West.
Yes, Mr. Weiss, go meet yourself all over again right now. Mr. Butcher, don't miss this opportunity.
I'd also like to make special recognition of Dr. Mark Eckstein, who was a medical director for the department, but also is part of our USAR task force and responds out with the task force in a very technical capacity.
Mr. President, colleague, the members of the Los Angeles City Fire Department Urban Search and Rescue Team, here they are, wonderful heroes of the city of Los Angeles. And I want to give one quick plug for people to go by their local fire station and purchase one of these firefighter support bracelets. Money goes back to the New York City Fire Department. Get that red bracelet at any Los Angeles City Fire Station. If we can have the recipients come up for a group photo session, please.
And as they come, let's give them a big, warm round of applause again. Mr. Zine, I think you should want to include the other members of the council as well. Mr. Weiss, both of you. Mr. Reyes, Ms. Perry, Mr. Holden, Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Pacheco, Mr. Berndson, join in on the festivities, will you?
Yes, unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at the nine o'clock event. But I just want to add my congratulations and thanks to your team for the great work you've done. And I can remember, for the New York disaster, that we had our little disaster in Northridge and in my district. And the same team did a fantastic job then. And I want to thank you all for your efforts, and we appreciate it. I hope we never have to do anything like that in Los Angeles again.
I'm sorry. That's all right.
I'm reminded, as we proceed with the business, that we appropriately celebrate the efforts of the Urban Search and Rescue Team. And at the same time, I think we want to acknowledge the firefighters, the rescue workers, and the civilians who have not been recovered yet from the wreckage of the World Trade Center. So while we celebrate bravery, we at the same time take the opportunity to continue to mourn the loss of those who have yet to be recovered. Mr. Clerk, first order of business, please.
Before starting the regular agenda, approval of minutes.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Perry, Moos, on seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss, Moos, and Mr. Holden, seconds.
Item number 11, there's a report from Council District 3 to continue that matter one week until October 23rd.
Without objection.
On the regular agenda, items numbers one through six are items for which have been noticed for public hearing.
Mr. Clerk, once again, please.
Items numbers one through six are notice public hearing items.
All right, let's see what we have here, one through seven. I see no cards on one through seven, Mr. Clerk, which means that they then are to be taken up. They're before us, members of the council. Items one through...
Six.
Six are before us. I see no one wishing to be heard. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote. Thank you very kindly. Next item, please.
Items numbers 11 through 20, with the exception of 11 that has been acted on, are items for which public hearings have been held, seven through 20.
All right. Having had the hearings on them, they are before us, members of the council. Those items are now before us. Mr. Reyes. All right, item 13 is called special by Mr. Reyes. Any other specials?
Mr. President.
Sorry, item 10 as well. Item number 10 called by Mr. Reyes.
Mr. President, items numbers 14 and 19, there are two reports on one file, emotions required. Item number 14, those reports could be adopted. Item number 19, the recommendations differ, so you may wish to call it special.
I will call it a special for that purpose. And the members who may have differing points of view from those respective committees, if you would be prepared to dispose of that, of those items when they come forward, it would be appreciated. All right? Any other specials at this point? Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the balance. Close the roll. Now tabulate the vote. Thank you very kindly. Next items, please.
There's a request that item 17 go forthwith.
As requested, that will be the order. Next items, please.
Items numbers 21 through 31 on the regular agenda are items for which public carings have not been held.
All right, we have 21 on which a member of the public wishes to be heard. And with that in mind, we will now vote that item. 28 and 30 are being called special by Ms. Han. Any other specials? All right, then we will handle the balance at this time, Mr. Clerk. That's an order. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. Thank you.
Mr. President, on the supplemental agenda, item number 33 is a Rule 16 motion, public hearing has not been held.
All right, that requires 10 votes to be heard, does it not?
That is correct.
Are we obliged to take that up at this time?
If you wish to have a vote on item number 33, that would be the first order of business, is 10 votes to consider.
All right, let's proceed in that manner, then. It is before us. Members of the council, item number 33 is now before us. And it requires 10 votes to take that item up. So open the roll on that. Close the roll. Please tabulate the vote. It is before us. Who wishes to be heard on item number 33? I see no one who wishes to be heard on item number 33. Mr. Clerk, you might want to cause the members of the council to be conscious of it.
Item number 33 is a personal service contract with Nurse Pat Godler for Council District 7.
All righty. No one wishing to be heard on it. Please open the roll on that item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote. That will be the order, and I suspect it should go forthwith. Next item, please.
Item number 10 called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. The reason I call it special is I just wanted to make a friendly amendment to existing motion. And basically, the essence of it is to define the spaces that we're seeking to become candidates for us to create community gardens, neighborhood parks, greenways, river edisms, wetlands, alleys, nuisance properties, and industrial area landscapes and other parcels to preserve them from future development. Again, these are parcels that have been neglected, parcels that aren't being considered for built-out in a built-out environment. Therefore, maybe we should be looking for opportunities to be creating these open spaces. And typically, they're found in areas that we traditionally would not consider ideal for parklands. But they do have hundreds of children, they do have apartment structures around them without any kind of recreational space. So I just want to thank the council and thank Council Missakowski for her support in this friendly amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Perry.
I wanted to speak in support of this as well because I had the good fortune to see this Chicago program several years ago. And I think it gives us a unique opportunity to assume control over spaces that are filled with trash and illegal dumping and take them and remediate them and beautify them for our respective communities. So I'm looking forward to finding a variety of sources of funding for this type of greening and beautifying. Thank you.
Thank you. No other member of the council wishes to be heard at this point. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll on the item.
Just a moment, Mr. President. A point clarification, Mr. Reyes, if a... Has a motion circulated?
Amending motion? Verbally, Mr. Reyes.
Item 10?
10.
Yes, is it a verbal amended or...?
Well, it's a writ motion that is being circulated right now.
It is what?
Okay, it has not been circulated yet.
All right, then what we should do is hold this on the desk and proceed to the next item unless you are now ready, Mr. Clerk. Your pleasure.
I am now ready.
You're now ready? You're now ready? So do we have 10 eight before us?
Yeah, 10 has amended.
10 has amended. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve eyes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Reyes and Ms. Perry, next item, please.
Item number 13 called special by Councilmember Reyes.
Mr. Reyes, floor is yours.
Thank you, councilmembers, Council President. Item 13 basically is an effort to... I'm not sure anyone's here from the department, but I wanted to find out what steps we were taking to look at the other historic areas. Highland Park, we have a very large historic overlay zone. In the West Adams area, we have a historic overlay zone as well. And I do see there are some CD1 blocks. It's not about just CD1 issue. I know on Carroll Avenue, there's one on Sky Street. But I want to get a clear understanding of what is the department doing to bring in more candidates to participate and take advantage of the Mills Act and its benefits. And is there a method or an approach that you might want to share with us, which we can bring in more structures from Highland Park, so to speak, or from West Adams, to be able to benefit from the Mills Act?
My name is Matthew Dilhofer, and I'm the Historical Property Contracts Manager for the Cultural Affairs Department. The Cultural Affairs Department administers the Mills Act, which is state-sponsored legislation allowing the city to partake in a historic preservation program. Our department is not chiefly responsible for the determination of HPOZs or Historic Preservation Overlay Zones. That is a function of the Planning Department. However, the Mills Act program is used as an incentive program in inspiring historic districts, primarily within the Los Angeles area, to become an HPOZ so that they can take advantage of this program.
No, that I do know. I do know it's a function of the Planning Department to designate these zones. My question to you is, these zones, is the department doing anything, or what activities are occurring to encourage... to disseminate the information so that people understand the incentives?
I understand. The current HPOZs have HPOZ boards, and they request our department to come out and speak on behalf of the Cultural Affairs Department to engage the public, to talk about what properties are most likely to benefit from the program, and what properties would be most utilized for this type of property tax incentive program.
Do you have any literature? Do you have any kind of information?
We have literature that is handed out based on what the eligibility restrictions are, as determined by the City Council. We also have a website set up to give people more information, and we have a phone system and flyers.
Are they multilingual? Is it multilingual, your information?
We are currently going to put on for next year's application a multilingual website and telephone service system.
So it is not at the moment?
Currently, it is not. The program is administered right now on a 20-hour workweek by one staff member.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Any other members wishing to be heard? Let me just add that the Mills Act plays a very important role in spurring historic preservation. But at the same time, it is a way to remove blight in the sense of some of those historic properties that have fallen into complete disarray are aided. Our communities are aided by this effort. So I was pleased to be a part of the effort at the local level to cause us to set up the ordinance so that our respective constituents could take advantage of the Mills Act. Otherwise, it was state law that we couldn't very well utilize. So I want to thank the staff for its diligence in this connection, and Mr. Reyes for those excellent questions, which will only help to make it better as it relates to implementation. With that, Mr. Clerk, please open the roll.
May I make a quick comment, though?
You may.
I would like to request that these be heard forthwith due to the time-sensitive nature of these contracts.
And they will be. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
And forthwith on this item. Next item, please.
Item number 19, called special, and as much as there's two reports on one file, a public safety report and personnel report, the recommendations differ.
Yes, and while I'm prepared to entertain that, Mr. Reyes, you have an introduction that you'd like to make. Mr. Reyes, do you have an introduction you wish to make?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Members of the council, today we have a group of very dedicated individuals, homeless advocates. They're led by the Los Angeles Coalition to End Hunger and Homelessness, and are here in support of $100 million housing trust fund. So I just want to acknowledge the presence, the people who are here, and just to let us know that they're keeping an eye on us. Thank you so much.
Mr. Rudy Thomas.
While we take note of a number of advocates here, we wanted to pay particular attention to Dr. Bob Erlinbusch and Reverend Eugene Butilier. I want to make note of the fact that these three young men, when we first began to fight against homelessness in the city of Los Angeles, and now look at them, they're even younger. Bob, Jane, good to see you.
Mr... Ms. Kowski?
On item 19, I will move the Personnel Committee report.
Mr. Garcetti? Okay, Personnel Committee report has been moved. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 21 called special, and as much as a member of the public wishes to be heard. Item 21 called special. Council calls for it, Mr. Jim McQuiston.
Good morning, Jim McQuiston. East Hollywood Community Association. I do want to just mention the fact that the general manager is moving very quickly in the Department of Neighborhood and Parma, but I also have to congratulate the committee headed by Councilmember Han, who is really moving into this very quickly and accomplishing lots, in my estimation. And I think that it's just a joy to see how fast this is being moved ahead.
Thank you very much. This concludes the public comment period for item 21. Members wishing to speak? Item 21. Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 28 called special by Councilmember Han. Item 28, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I called this special just to really point this out as something that is, in my opinion, a great example of what I think we're all trying to accomplish, which is, number one, a joint use agreement between... this is between the Port of Los Angeles and the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club to beneficially come together. It's a building that the port actually built many years ago. It was supposed to be a community center, but frankly, over the years, it has mostly gone vacant. And this was an opportunity to allow the Boys and Girls Club to lease this property. They're actually going to put in over $300,000 of their own money for improvements, and the Port of Los Angeles will provide $100,000 a year to help operate it, and it will serve between 200 and 250 children a day, particularly from the low-income, at-risk youth category in San Pedro. It really helps to solve all our problems about another after-school program. So I just wanted to bring this up and tell you that I am very proud of the Port of Los Angeles, and I'm really very proud of the great job that the San Pedro Boys and Girls Club is doing. Their executive director, Mike Lanzing, is actually here today. This is a great deal. A great deal for the city. It's a great deal for the Boys and Girls Club, but ultimately, this is a great deal for the children of San Pedro. So I just wanted to point this out. This is a good thing we're doing, and I urge you all to support this with your eyes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Any other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Congratulations to the Boys and Girls Club. Next item, please. Item number 30 called special by Councilmember Han. Item number 30, Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask for your support in including the Great Point Berman Lighthouse as part of one of the historical-cultural monuments in the city of Los Angeles. This is a lighthouse that was built in 1874. It actually served as a beacon during... a lookout point during World War II, and it has really served to provide safe passage of ships along the coast of San Pedro for many, many decades. Point of interest for the city, actually Mayor Norris Paulson actually used this lighthouse sometimes as a South Mayor's Mansion, and actually received visitors to Los Angeles at the lighthouse. I'm hoping that under the restoration, maybe once again, it will become the South Mayor's Mansion, and Mayor Han will spend more time in San Pedro at the lighthouse. But anyway, I really hope you'll support this, and if you've never had an opportunity to come down and take a tour of this lighthouse, it is absolutely a fabulous structure, and it's a fabulous piece of history, not only just for San Pedro, but for the entire city of Los Angeles. So I hope you'll vote to include it as one of our historic monuments here in Los Angeles. Thank you.
Is that an invitation?
Yes, come down. We'll make it the South Council Presidents of the 15th District.
Mr. Holden.
Oh, the Mayor's Mansion, huh? Which one, JH or Dave JH?
JH.
Do you know it? No. Only the San Pedro separates, right? You're not advocating that, are you? Oh, well, then you've got to leave the mansion right here. Number one. Number two, you had the guy named Gibson. You had Joan Mickey Flores. You had Rudy Savornish. They didn't bring this motion in. You love this lighthouse? All right, Ms. Han. In fact, the matter is that you gave us a historical value. Mr. Weiss, Paulson and all. World War II. Anything else? You left that? Yes, a lot. All right, I concur. Mr. President, I'm going to vote aye.
Thank you, Mr. Holden. Other members wishing to speak? Seeing none. Mr. Clerk, please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please. Item number 32 is a closed-session item. Do you wish to hold that on the desk? Let's hold that on the desk and clear the desk. Okay, so now it's time for public comment. Opportunity for members of the public to address the council on items within our jurisdiction but not appearing on today's agenda, and seeing no requests, the public comment period for today's meeting is closed. Next item. Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to introduce a motion today as well for indemnification policy, looking citywide at... especially with neighborhood councils, as this comes about. This has been an issue as well in the 13th District, as community groups begin to be active in their communities to indemnify them against lawsuits which sometimes are frivolous against them and which would discourage community activism in the 13th District. This is... it's being circulated right now, so you know, it's not going to be for today, but I just want to put on the record for the next meeting about it, that this motion would then allow community groups like neighborhood councils. The Silver Lake Chamber of Commerce recently, for instance, was sued for a wrongful death suit, wrongful death. The city attorney cross-complained against the Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Garcetti, excuse me, this is a motion which will be on next week's agenda, and it would be appropriate to discuss it at that time.
All right, so this will be on there, and I'll be speaking then. Thanks.
Mr. Garcetti. Mr. Clerk, next item. Item number 32 are closed-session items, so... Let's clear the desk. Clearing the desk would mean motions are posted and referred. The desk is clear except for item 32. Okay, in accordance with California law, the council now adjourns its closed session. Mr. Clerk, next item, please. Item 32B, a request from the city attorney to approve and authorize a civil procedure 68 in the sum of $225,000 in case. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. Next item. Item number 32C, request from the city attorney to authorize rule civil procedure 68 in the sum of $200,000. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
That is approved. Item number 32D, city attorney recommendation for judgment and settlement of liabilities claimed account in Block versus City in the amount of $900,000. Please open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Just been notified that A also has to be done in open session. It's to authorize city attorney a compromise in the case Roy Montes versus City of Los Angeles, and it's in the sum of $290,000. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 eyes.
Let's send all closed-session items forthwith to the mayor. Next item, please. The desk is clear. Adjourning motions? Ask everybody to please stand. Mr. Brynson.
Yes, I have two. First, I'd ask that we adjourn in memory of Hildegard Rosen, who passed away on October 8th. She's survived by her daughter Ruth Resnick, who lives in Porter Ranch. And the next one is unfortunately a very, very old and dear friend of mine, Norman Feintech, passed away last Friday. Norman and his family, he's survived by his wife Evelyn, two daughters, two son-in-laws, also by a sister and a brother Irving, who many of you know. Norman and Irving were instrumental in many, many activities in benefit of our community. They were the... I believe they donated the property up on top where the temple is now located, Stephen S. Weiss, and along with Nate Chappell, I think were responsible for providing that. Both Norman and Irving served and were greatly responsible for the development of Cedar Sinai Medical Center to the great facility that it is today. But in addition to all these things, he was a warm and wonderful individual who unfortunately had been ill for a number of years. He passed on Friday, but he has left his mark on our society, and I would ask that we adjourn his memory.
Ms. Han.
Thank you. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. James Ike... I ask that we adjourn in memory of Mrs. James Ike Durham, who served in the U.S. Navy and was retired from the Seal Beach Weapons Station. She had five beautiful children, one of which is Shay Hamilton, who worked for Congresswoman Juanita Millander McDonald in the Watts community, and presently working for the Los Angeles Eye Institute in the Watts community. And she is also a board member of the Watts Willowbrook Christmas Parade Committee. So I ask that we adjourn in the memory of her mother today.
Any others? Colleagues asked that we... You join me in adjourning in memory of Mr. Philip Edward Kirsch, born in 1948 in Indiana, recently passed away. He was currently vice president and county manager for the First American Title Company of Los Angeles, also known as Fat Cola. He was with the company for 18 years and served not only as a successful executive, but a mentor of many, many representatives in that company. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.